Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, February 11th, 2014 Elmhurst Board of Education Meeting. We have seven board members present, none absent. We have been in closed session since six o'clock this evening for three reasons. Discuss employment of employee, contract negotiations, and property acquisition, lease, or purchase. Will you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on our agenda is the best part of any Board of Education meeting, recognition of our high-performing students, and this week as well, our high-performing teachers. Mr. Purnow.
Yes, we're going to start off with the presentation of the Illinois Music Education Association and the wonderful students that are being honored this evening. And with that, I'm going to introduce Brian Berg, who will do the ceremony and do the introductions. Brian?
Good evening, members of the Board, district staff, Elmhurst community. On behalf of the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205, 6th through 8th grade Music Department, it is my honor and privilege to introduce our Illinois Music Educators Association Junior Festival participants for 2013. I'd like to begin this evening by acknowledging the 6th through 8th grade music staff for their hard work with our students. It is through their daily efforts that we are able to help students learn to sing and play instruments and prepare for opportunities such as the ILMEA Junior Festival. Our staff, and many of them are here with us this evening, at Bryan, Jessica Tadavosian, Samantha Kunanan, Ellen Gary, Jeanette Sebing, and myself. At Churchville, Barbara Scott, Cindy Kraus, and Lindsay Sickinger. And at Sandberg, Heather Knight, Ricardo Vasquez, Stacy Milo Stan, John Gaunt, and Kim Lambert Heck. Each year, the Illinois Music Educators Association hosts the Junior Festival for middle school music students who excel in voice, woodwind, brass, string, and percussion instruments. Students audition to participate in the festival band, orchestra, choir, or jazz band. Then selected students wake up early on a Saturday morning, travel to the festival site, spend a full morning and afternoon rehearsing together with one of these four ensembles under the direction of a distinguished conductor, and then present a joint concert in the afternoon. ILMEA hosts junior festivals like, such as these, in nine separate geographical regions of the state. Prior to the audition, students from our District 205 music program, with the assistance of our district music staff, local private teachers, parents, and other members of the community, practice diligently to prepare and refine their audition pieces and perform to the best of their ability. On October 5th, 75 of our District 205 students, along with approximately 1,000 other students from the southwest Chicago Joliet region, traveled to Homewood to audition for the opportunity to perform with one of the ILMEA District 1 Junior Festival ensembles. All District 205 students who seized the extra opportunity to practice, audition, and learn are to be commended for their efforts. The festival was held on Saturday, November 9th, 2013, at Riverside Brookfield High School in Riverside, Illinois. The three ensembles presented an outstanding joint performance in the early evening for a capacity audience in the gym. The District 1 Jazz Band presented a performance the following week. I'm very proud to present the following 34 Elmhurst 205 students who are selected into the ILMEA Region 1 Junior Festival Honor Band, Orchestra, Choir, and Jazz Band. And students, what I'd like you to do is come up front, and you're going to stand in the semicircle here facing the camera, as I call your name. From Bryan Middle School, Sienna Olson, Kirsten Hendrick, Nicola Pelosi, Sarah Winkle, Alexander Wood, Abby Chikaron, Neil Wary, Anita Wary, Katie Wegman, Maggie Schroeder, Carlene Stanton, Kara Stanton, Gabby Mastrow, Natalie Heredel, Michael Binderman, and Ben Pavlik. From Churchville Middle School, Melissa Droste, Kirsten Droste, Natalie Crowder, and Corey Elliott. And from Sandberg, Cecilia Stumpf, Lauren Hund, James Shodun, Tessa Vermulien, Ryland Johnson, Ellie Kablusik, Artemis Cialellis, Maya Toffler, and Leah Widmer. David Hanson, Karina Kanzler, Abigail Marionetti, Erin Stone, and Isabelle Nicoli. The ILMEA participants for 2013.
That was a great introduction, and I will not try to embellish that at all. I'm just going to get right to reading the proclamation. So whereas the Illinois Music Educators Association, ILMEA, Junior Festival, held on November 9th, 2013, recognizes middle school students for their musical accomplishments, and whereas this program encourages excellence on the part of individual students and encourages further music study and artistry, and whereas the following Elmhurst District 205 middle school students were selected to play in an honor ensemble along with some of the most accomplished student musicians in the region. From Bryan Middle School, Michael Binderman on the bass, Abigail Cicceroni alto-voice, Kirsten Hendrick soprano-voice, Natalie Herdrill cello, Gabriella Mastrow cello, Sienna Olson French horn, Nicole Pelosi soprano-voice, Margaret Schroeder violin, Carlene Stanton violin, Kara Stanton viola, Anita Wary violin, Neil Wary violin, Catherine Wegman violin, Sarah Winkle soprano-voice, and Alexander bass-voice. And from Churchville Middle School, Kirsten Droste soprano-voice, Melissa Droste trombone, Natalie Crowder soprano-voice. And from Sandberg Middle School, James Shodun alto sax, David Hanson tenor-voice, Laura Hund flute, Ryland Johnson viola, Karina Kanzler soprano-voice, Elizabeth Kubicek violin, Abigail Marionetti soprano-voice, Isabella Nicoli soprano-voice, Stephen Rosario tenor- voice, Artemis Cialellis violin, Erin Stone soprano-voice, Cecilia Stumpf trumpet, Maya Toffler violin, Tessa Vermulien flute, Leah Widmer violin, and whereas Bryan Middle School student Ben Pavlik on the guitar, and Churchville Middle School student Corey Elliott vibes were selected to play in the Jazz Festival held one week later. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to Bryan, Churchville, and Sandberg Middle Schools, to District 205, and to our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and their teachers for this outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations to all of you.
It is our pleasure, it's my pleasure to introduce Diana Smith. And Diana is going to be introducing our new class of National Board Certified Teachers. And Diane, I'm sure we're going on explanation, but this is the highest standards for teachers. These people have dedicated a lot of time and effort to become nationally board certified, and really that's a benefit to the students and our district, and I want to thank them personally for taking the effort and time to do that. So with that, introduce Diana.
Good evening, and thanks so much to the Board for taking a few minutes to recognize our three newly certified National Board Teachers, Breann Kennedy Brooks, and Justin Riscus, and Jennifer Shackleton. I wanted to tell you just for a minute, a little bit about each one, and then something, one or two things about them collectively as a group that went through this very rigorous process. Together, they have been teaching at York, I think we just combined and said, about 20 years combined. Breann has been a member of the English faculty. She is a self-described school junkie. She said she loves school and always has. She pursued the National Board Certification process because she's always looking to grow, and she wanted to push herself. Her department chair and her colleagues say that she is an incredible leader in the department. She's helped to guide the department philosophy toward grading, and she also spearheaded the new peer observation team so that teachers go into classrooms and observe each other. As a teacher, she also has an incredible classroom management style, one after which many of her colleagues modeled their own practice. I know that I recently worked with a first-year teacher, and he has some growth in classroom management, and one of the things he's going to do for professional development is to be able to go in and observe her. When you look across some of the most significant interdisciplinary teams in the building, you will see Breann, Grading Task Force, Achieve, and others, which is really an indication of her school-wide role. She's also the sponsor with the kids of the Kiwanis Key Club and the Book Club. She teaches freshman English, the Freshman Cohort, and Chicago Lit. So this is Breann Kennedy Brooks. Jen Shackleton is also a member of the English faculty. She teaches freshman English and Complet and Film, and her colleagues and her department chairs say that she is one of the most reflective teachers in the department. She takes her craft extremely seriously, which is obvious during the board process. She spent countless hours, according to her department chair, reflecting on the videos of her teaching. She told me she really looked closely at the way students in small groups operated when she wasn't watching them, which she could see on the videotape, I think something we could all appreciate. She also said that she was interested in focusing the most closely on freshman students. She didn't anticipate it, but they ended up becoming a focal point for her, which is a great benefit, I think, to us as administrators, to the Board. Her department chair also shares that she's incredibly knowledgeable about English content, becoming the go-to teacher in the department when it comes to novels, grammar skills, and also literary style. She's a valuable asset. She is the sponsor of the Mirrors Literary Magazine, and also the very popular Java Live on Friday evenings. And finally, this is Justin Riscus, and he's a member of our Social Studies Department, and he teaches U.S. History, World History, and Military History, which is a course that he helped to develop. He's the sponsor of our Young Politicians and the Military History Club. That's the group that helped to design the mural, which many of you have admired in the atrium stairs of the U.S. military, and he also helped to organize our Veterans Assembly, our annual assembly. He's an expert in Lithuanian history and culture and politics, something that we all know about him, but now all of you know as well, and just published a book available on Amazon called Lithuanian Chicago: Images of America. His colleagues, including Tim Albert and Charlie Kern, talked a little bit about how selfless he is as a colleague. They said he is steadfast when it comes to his passion for kids, but extremely flexible to try new things and incorporate suggestions. They said you know more about history than all of the rest of the teachers in the department combined, and always find ways to make history interesting. They said that you don't always agree with the other people in the department, and that you are okay with making your opinion known, which I, which I respect. In the end, however, you will always consider any opinion you think will benefit students and will make you a better teacher. And that tells you a little bit about each one of them individually. I also thought it was really important to know that their students talk about them in something that they say in common, the three things they say in common about the teachers. They love kids, they love their content, and they love their jobs, which is sort of the trifecta for us as administrators and the Board in hiring them, so I'm very proud of that. And I don't think I realized how collaborative they were in the process until talking with them. They really went into this National Board Certification, a year-long process together as a cohort. Not everybody makes it out. It's a very rigorous process. They did it together. They spent a lot of time thinking and researching and reflecting. When we talk about the importance of giving teachers collaboration time, this is really a testament to the result. They said that the process allowed them to think about every step of the way about how kids learn. Deep thinking about the importance of understanding what kids know when they start a class, how to address their gaps, and most important, how to reach each and every student, and that it never looks quite the same way for any two students. And what's been inspiring for me to hear in talking to them and talking to their colleagues is that they don't see teaching as an end game, that they have all the answers. In fact, the more they learn about teaching, the more they grow, that it's something that you don't ever really master. Becoming National Board Certified is truly impressive, but what makes them great teaching is that they truly put student learning first. They're three of our very best, and I'm proud to introduce to you Breann Kennedy Brooks, Jennifer Shackleton, and Justin Riscus.
Again, I am never, ever going to try to top an introduction by Diana Smith. They are so great, so thorough. But I do want to tell our three newly board certified teachers that the Board of Education gets it, that that's a big deal. It takes hundreds, probably even better stated, thousands of hours to get there. So we truly appreciate the time, the effort, and especially your dedication, and I couldn't think of three better examples of excellence in teaching in this district. Congratulations. So let me read your proclamation. Whereas certification awarded by the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards is the highest honor for the teaching profession can bestow, and whereas this designation is bestowed upon teachers who meet high and rigorous standards through intensive study, expert evaluation, self-assessment, and peer review, and whereas National Board Certified teachers are called upon to act as role models and spokespersons in the effort to build and strengthen the teaching profession, to provide advice, assistance, and mentoring to new and experienced teachers, and to use their knowledge to help form education policy, restructure curriculum, and/or pilot innovative teaching strategies, and whereas in 2013, there were 106,000 National Board Certified teachers in all 50 states and the District Columbia, and 261 Illinois teachers who achieved National Board Certification. And whereas York Community High School teachers, Breann Kennedy Brooks, English, Language Arts, Adolescent and Young Adulthood, Justin Riscus, History, Adolescence and Young Adulthood, Jennifer Shackleton, English, Adolescence and Young Adulthood, join the 4,000 members of this year's class of National Board Certified Teachers, and whereas the addition of these three exemplary educators brings the total in District 205 National Board Certified Teachers to 22. And whereas this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community of Elmhurst, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit District 205 express congratulations to our 2013 National Board Certified Teachers for this outstanding accomplishment. We'll take a little 30-second break here, because we know there's homework to be done, So next on our agenda is public comments. I have one blue slip from our very own Pat Mall. So Pat, if you want to come up.
Oh, there she is.
Where is she?
She didn't see her.
Pat? Pat Mall?
Pat, she's calling you.
Here she is.
Sorry, can you hear me back?
I'm sorry.
My apologies.
So Pat, if you just come up, tell us, give us your address, and...
I reside at 336 Ridgeland in Elmhurst, longtime resident and proud Conrad Fisher School teacher. I'm here tonight with my colleagues and friends from Conrad Fisher. This week at Fisher, we are participating in Jump Rope for Heart. Additionally, 13 of our Fisher teachers led six bilingual parenting classes which focused on nutrition, assisting with home or completion, accessing a public library card, which resulted in 35 new library cards for our children. Our Fisher teachers volunteered countless hours planning and implementing these parenting classes. Our bilingual secretary translated the curriculum trifles for all grade levels. During our January institute, our Building Reading Specialist presented a closed reading presentation, preparing our staff for the rigor of Common Core standards. Throughout multiple transitions, Conrad Fisher continues to thrive with a passionate and committed staff. We wish to thank our administration and Board for your vision, and hope you will continue to support the unique needs of our students and families. We deeply appreciate your continued efforts to ensure equity throughout our district. Thank you.
Thank you.[1426.83][1426.83](applause) Now, Pat's was the only blue slip. If there's anyone else that has public comments, then we'll move on. I'll turn it over to Mr. Purnow for superintendent's communication.
Yes, we're going to start this evening. We want to review with the Board the latest information on the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Career, better known as PARK. The State Board of Education recently released some guidelines and suggested dates for PARK assessment and testing, and we thought it was important that we bring the Board up to speed on what the latest plans are, and also the community on those plans, and some of the implications that we see for our school system in the initiation of the PARK assessment coming up in spring of next year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Charles Brandell, and he has a PowerPoint to walk the Board through this.
Thank you, and good evening. As Mr. Purnow indicated, in the past, we have talked about PARK in kind of broad terms, and recently, we've gotten a little bit more detail and thought it was important to update you on what we do know and what we still don't know about the PARK assessment. And what I'm going to do tonight is kind of divide this into three different sections. One, just a little bit of background, and then looking a little more closely at some of the changes that PARK brings, how it's different from what we're currently doing, and then dive into what are some of the implications, what are some of the impacts going to be for us. So starting out with some background and what the PARK assessment is. PARK is being designed to assess the Common Core standards, and it's being designed by a consortium of currently 17 states and the District of Columbia, who are pooling resources and efforts to develop this assessment tied to the Common Core standards. It seeks to do a couple of things, mainly to fully assess all of the Common Core standards. Now, one of the things you've heard us say, and will hear us say again, is, for example, this year's ISAT is 100% aligned to Common Core. Now, what that means is every question on ISAT matches up with some Common Core standard, but it doesn't mean the reverse. It doesn't mean that all of the Common Core standards are being assessed on this year's ISAT. Some of the Common Core standards are nearly impossible to evaluate using pencil and paper multiple choice questions, and so what PARK is setting out to do is create an assessment that fully measures the achievement of each student on all of those Common Core standards. It's also being designed to eventually give us information during the school year, so rather than just being an end-of-year assessment, to actually give us formative information during the school year. As we'll see later on, it's not quite there yet, but that is part of their timeline. And also to incorporate some more innovative approaches. As I mentioned earlier, paper and pencil multiple choice tests are difficult to use to measure all of the things that Common Core expects of our students. So by using online testing and some more innovative approaches, they're trying to dig a little deeper and get at all of those standards. One of the things that's important to realize is that PARK is not a single assessment. So we're used to thinking, you know, ISAT is a single assessment at the end of the year. PARK is actually a series of assessments, starting at the beginning of the year, and then again in the middle of the year, those are colored and shown on this slide as being optional. Then, the performance-based assessment occurs at about the three-quarter point of the year, and then finally, an end-of-the-year assessment at about 90% of the year. Now, that performance-based assessment and the end-of-year assessment are both required pieces of PARK. The other required piece is the speaking and listening assessment. So one of the things I'd like to do is take a second and look at each one of those kind of individually. First of all, the diagnostic and mid-year assessments. Those are meant to be formative. That's part of PARK attempting to give us information through the school year. So it's not just an end-of-the-year test to see how they do, but that we have indications of students' strengths and weaknesses early in the year where we can still make adjustments before that accountability exam happens at the end of the year. Unfortunately, those are not going to be ready next year. The end-of-the-year required pieces will be, the formative pieces are not going to be ready for next school year. They are slated to be ready for the '16-'17 school year. The speaking and listening assessment is one of the required pieces. It's a piece that we have very little information about yet, other than the fact that it is required, also that it will be graded locally. So they will give us the assessment, we'll administer it to students, but it'll be our teachers that are in charge of actually grading that. It also will not be a part of our accountability measures. The two parts that will be a part of the accountability measures are the performance-based assessment and the end-of-year assessment. We look a little closely, more closely, at each one of those. The performance-based assessment is to be given at about 75% of the school year. You can see the actual window is from March 9th till April 3rd next year, so in... The two parts that will be a part of the accountability measures are the performance-based assessment and the end-of-year assessment. We look a little closely, more closely at each one of those. The performance-based assessment is to be given at about 75% of the school year. You can see the actual window is from March 9th till April 3rd next year, so in that timeframe. As a performance-based assessment, its focus will be on some of those skills that are much harder to measure by a machine-scored, multiple-choice kind of assessment. So this will involve students writing essays. It will involve, have students solving multiple-step math problems where their work and the way they solve the problem will actually be scored. So some of this will require hand-scoring, where a human being actually reads the essay and puts a score on it. Some pieces of it will be machine-scored, so it will be something that there is one set answer that a machine can score it. The end-of-year assessment will be all machine-scored. So it's either something that's multiple-choice or has a distinct single answer that a machine can check whether it's right or wrong. And so that will somewhat set the focus of what can be measured on that assessment. It'll have to be more driven on the content standards, reading comprehension, those kinds of skills. And again, that's given at the end of the school year. Next year's window is from the end of April to the third week in May. All right, so how is this different from our current accountability tests? First of all, we'll be giving it to more students. Currently, we give ISAT in 3rd through 8th grades, and then PSE at 11th grade. So our 9th and 10th graders do not have an accountability assessment. PARK assesses all students from 3rd through 11th grade. So our 9th and 10th graders will be taking an accountability assessment at the end of the school year. Another big change is the amount of time that it takes students to take the assessments. And I chose a couple of grade levels to use as examples, starting with first or 5th grade at the end of elementary school. Currently, ISAT is administered in six different testing sessions, and total testing time is 270 minutes. PARK, if we combine the required pieces, the performance-based assessment and the end-of-year, it's a total of nine testing sessions for 560 minutes. So more than double the amount of testing time. And we see a similar kind of change when we look at what our 11th graders would be doing. PSAE is 350 minutes, whereas the new PARK assessment will be 595 minutes. Now, it's important to mention here, the PARK times up there don't include a couple of things. First of all, they do not include the speaking and listening portion, which is a required piece that we do have to administer, but we don't have the timings of that yet, so we don't know how many minutes that's going to add. The other piece is part of the administration guidance that we've been given from PARK, which they've developed for field testing that's going on this spring, is that each testing session, while it has a certain amount of time that's been allotted for it, we will be required to give all students additional time if they need it. And actually, we do something similar with ISAT right now. The way ISAT sessions run is each session is 45 minutes, but if at the end of those 45 minutes, students are still working, then they get another 10 minutes to finish things up. And then at the end of that total of 55 minutes, everybody has to be done. They have to turn in the test whether they've actually completed all the questions or not. PARK has similar, similar extra time built in, although it's actually much more extensive. It typically runs about 50% of the time that's allotted for each session. So in an 80-minute session, the extra time that's allotted is another 40 minutes. Now, what that means is students may not be actually testing for that full 120 minutes for that session, but we still have to plan for that. We still have to block that time out of the school day because if students are still working, we have to give them that extra time. So there's a stark contrast between the minutes that are up there, but realize that the actual minutes for PARK are actually even more than what's up on the screen right PARK is being designed to be given online. We have some experience in the district at elementary and middle school giving online tests because we've been using NWEA MAP for several years. PARK has given us some tools to kind of gauge where our technology is. David Smith and I have sat down and run through some of that modeling and used some of those tools. PARK gives us a four-week window for each session. Given the technology resources that we have currently, it will take us those four weeks. In order to be able to cycle students in and out of computer labs, given the minutes that you just saw that we need to block off for those testing sessions, it will take us the four weeks to get it done. Now, next year, PARK is offering a paper and pencil version, which they're saying is a one-year deal recognizing that there are many districts that don't even have the resources that we have and frankly cannot do it in four weeks. So for next year, there will be a pencil and paper version, which is something we're looking into as a transition piece toward that online testing. PARK has recently released some actual questions. They had had kind of some model questions floating around. They've now actually released some of the actual questions from some of the field testing that they're doing, which gives us a glimpse of the difference. And I've chosen a couple of examples to show you that I think indicate the increase in rigor that PARK is going to ask of us. Both of these questions have to do with a computation standard. So in ISAT, the students are answering 17 minus 9. They're choosing from four answers. The PARK assessment, they're doing a subtraction problem, but the way they answer it is by typing the number in the box. And if you think about it, those are two very different things. If you've got four choices in front of you and you know one of them's the right answer and you have to pick one, that's very different than actually being able to do the problem and type the number in. On the reading side, here's an example from ISAT, middle school reading. And students would have been given an article about Charles Schulz's life and how he developed the Peanuts comic strip. And then the question that they're asked to write about is, explain what the reader can learn from Charles Schulz's life and use information from the passage in your answer. A PARK question that gets at a similar standard. First of all, it starts out, you've read a website entry, an article, and watched a video. So they've been exposed to three different sources of information about this topic, which happens to be Amelia Earhart. And then what it asks them to do in that third paragraph is write an essay that analyzes the strength of the arguments related to Earhart's bravery in at least two of the three supporting materials. So if you compare what kids are being asked to do in those two different situations, one, what can the reader learn from Charles Schulz's life? And two, analyze the strengths of arguments in two or three different sources. Those are very different levels of rigor. Okay? And that's one of the things, as was mentioned earlier, that we have been working on preparing students for, but we need to realize that when PARK comes, these are very different kinds of questions than what we've seen on ISAT in the past. All right, how is this going to impact us, at least given what we know right now? First of all, we've already been feeling that impact as we've been transitioning to Common Core. District 205 started that transition actually the day after the Common Core standards were released in June of 2010. We had these three rooms full of teachers working on analyzing those new standards, how they compared to what we were currently doing, looking vertically through the grades of how we were going to build and transition into these standards. It's going to impact us in terms of time. We already looked at the total minutes that students are going to be testing, but we also are going to have to be looking at how this interacts with our current systems and our current assessments. And many of those, as we'll see in more detail in just a second, overlap each other and happen at the same time, and we're going to have to make some choices. I talked about, we looked at some of the models and run some of those, and it's going to take us the four weeks, given the technology resources that we have. What we need to realize is during that four-week period, and remember PARK is two four-week periods at the end of the year, what we've modeled is using all of our resources geared toward testing, which means none of those computers, none of those technology resources are going to be available for instruction during that total of eight weeks of testing. Now, if we look at how that plays out on the calendars, this is an elementary/middle school calendar for next year, for the 1415 school year. Spring break happens at the end of March, beginning of April, and then we have a three-week MAP testing window, which typically happens at the end of April, beginning of May. If we overlay the two four-week PARK windows, so the top is that performance-based assessment, and then the bottom four weeks near the end of the school year is the end-of-year assessment. You can see that it overlaps with MAP. So first of all, we can't do that. If we're using computers for PARK, those computers are not available for NWEA. One option would be, because we can move our NWEA window, we could move that into that three weeks that are open. But if you think about what that means, that means that we have testing going on for basically the last 11 weeks of the school year. And remember that that ties up all of our technology resources for those assessments. So we're going to have to make a decision about NWE MAP, and is that something that we can continue to do? It's even more stark at the high school. At the high school, same spring break, we have two weeks of AP testing in May, followed by a week of final exams, and barring the use of any emergency days, last day of school next year at the high school is the 22nd. If we overlay the PARK windows, you can see that for that end-of-year assessment, we're doing PARK testing, we're doing AP testing, we're doing final exams, all at the same time. And logistically, that's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to actually pull off, let alone the impact that that has on students when they're doing this test and doing that test and doing another test the next week. And all that they have going on at that end of the year is going to seem like an endless series of tests. Another thing to consider, we have over the past couple of years developed systems within the district. You know, we've tied NWEA to the E-PASS system so that we have, you know, one system of assessments that we can follow students' growth over time throughout elementary, middle, and high school. As you saw on those calendars, one of the things that I talked about was, we're going to have to make a decision, and it's going to be very difficult to do spring MAP testing. Well, some of those systems rely on us doing spring MAP testing. You know, one of the things that we look at is fall-to-spring growth on MAP in the elementary and middle school levels. If, when we have to pare back on some of those systems we already have in place, we're going to be starting over and having to redevelop those systems. And, you know, we don't use those just for the KPIs. We use those for placement. We use those to track students' progress in interventions, to diagnose which students need to be placed into interventions. And we're going to go back to a starting point if we have to jettison those systems we already have and start using new things. It's going to take us time to build up a history with those new assessments to figure out, you know, what are the scores, what are the cut points that indicate certain things for our kids. The list of things we don't know is much longer than these three, but I chose these three just as discussion points. First of all, what's going to happen with ACT? So currently, ACT is a part of our PSA. It really is the bulk of our PSAE testing, is students taking the ACT. And the state made that commitment many years ago to universally test all juniors, so all juniors take an ACT. Currently, the state board has requested funding to continue that for next year, but with no promises for any years after that. So one of the things we're going to have to decide is, if the state isn't funding, is that something that we still value? But there are complications that go along with that as well. Another piece is, right now, Illinois mandates that we test students in science in 4th, 7th, and 11th grades. We have not gotten any indication of what the state is going to do with that. Are we going to continue to give ISAT science in 4th and 7th grade? And some is be developed science in 11th grade? Or how are they going to do that? Or are they going to change that so that we don't test science? And the other piece that isn't directly related to PARK is changes that are coming to the E-PASS system, Explore, Plan, and ACT. The ACT company, corporation, is discontinuing Explore and Plan. Next year will be the last year that they offer Explore and Plan. They are transitioning to a new testing system called Aspire, which actually is available for students from 3rd grade up through high school. So they're making that transition, and although that's not directly related to the PARK assessment, it has some of the same impacts on us. A lot of our systems now are built on that E-PASS system, and those are all going to have to go back to the starting board. All right, I will turn it back over to you for questions, discussion, or comments.
So, yeah, given that this is just a progress update, who wants to lead off? Emily?
I have a question about, you talked about nine sessions, 560 minutes. And then I saw the two blocks of windows. You said it would take four minutes, beginning, I mean, four weeks, beginning to end. But how much would a student actually be testing? Like, in that, take the first four-week period, say in March, which is the first of the two required...
Could you put that high school slide as an example back up there? I have the same question as Emily.
So high school students, I think you said 590 minutes and nine sessions. How would those break out over those 595 minutes, nine sessions? And then when you have the calendar up with the purple and the green, what is nine sessions in 595 minutes? What does that look like for a student? I don't, I guess I know what that means.
So you just want more detail about what sessions are when?
Because it's not four weeks. I know you said the testing, say for the March portion and the May portion is four weeks for all the students beginning to end. But if I'm just one student taking five, 600 minutes of testing, how, how many days is that over? How does that look?
The way that breaks down is, if you're one student, the performance-based piece, which was the first four-week window...
Right.
You're going to take five different tests.
Okay.
Five different assessments, three of them in English Language Arts and two in math, which range from 50 minutes to 85 minutes each.
Okay.
And again, we have to block off basically 50% more than that amount of time in case students need it. Then, the end-of-the-year assessment is four different sessions, two in English Language Arts and two in math, which are either 55 minutes or 70 minutes each.
So do kids do several sessions a day? I mean, will they have two full days of testing?
The adminis, part of that's going to depend on the logistics of how can they be scheduled, if we're doing it online, how can they be scheduled into a computer lab? The administrative guidance that we get from PARK is that you can't do any more than two sessions in a single day. So we could do two sessions in a day if we could logistically make that work.
And then the MAP testing, you said right now, it currently goes on at the beginning of the year. That's, we use that as a tool to assess any interventions that a kid needs? And then it also goes on at the other times throughout the year?
Right now, we do a fall MAP, a winter, and a spring.
Okay. Is it conceivable that the PARK test would, if you do one of the optional sessions at the beginning of the year, would be able to be used in that same way? Or, I mean, just conceivably, is that even a possibility?
Yes, conceivably it is.
Okay.
You know, part of, part of the issue, we won't even see those formative pieces till the 1617 school year. And again, as I mentioned, you know, one of the things is, it takes a certain amount of time for us to build up enough information, enough data, to be able to say, okay, these are the kinds of scores that indicate to us that a student should be in an intervention.
Right.
You know, that, actually, the quickest way to do that is for us to continue MAP testing while we're PARK testing.
That's the other line.
So that we have both sets of scores for the same students. But that is an extraordinary assessment load on kids.
Shannon?
For AYP, how will that work? What year are we in right now? For some of our schools, you know, we're, I don't understand how that's all going to work with AYP. These, with the new assessments, you go back, start over, or they're continue the years that we're already in?
There isn't any, any indication that there is going to be a reset on that.
No indication?
It, you know, my... You know, my understanding, from at least what I've heard, is that, yes, this would just be a continue. Basically, they're substituting in a different test to determine whether you make AYP. But whatever step you were on, you would continue where you were. They're not, yeah, they're not resetting the clock.
Margaret?
Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of changes that are inherent in this and some that we don't even know about and probably won't know for a long time. I guess I'm wondering, have, I know it is not required yet, but have other places managed to incorporate this? How did they do that, if they have? How do they do that? You know, and I guess I'm wondering, how does their staff manage that? Because it seems like it would be quite a bit of a struggle for the staff as well as the students. So, any insight on, if it's been done, how and what did they, what did get, what did people get from it?
Yeah, I don't have any insight because it hasn't been done. It's brand-new. Nobody has given it. They are field testing questions this spring. So, there are many school districts throughout the state that are, that are doing those field tests. What we hear from people that have volunteered to do those field tests is that they're already struggling just trying to make a field test work. And for the field test, they're testing just a portion of a grade level. There, nobody is field testing every grade level, every test. What they're doing is, some of their fourth-grade students are taking just the math portion of the end of the year. And, and right now, what we're hearing is that they're struggling to make that work. So, yeah, we don't have any insight yet from anybody else just because it hasn't, it hasn't been done anywhere.
I guess just one follow-up question, because I, I can't imagine that this was done just for, just to make everyone's life miserable. I mean, I just can't. Maybe it's foolish, but I just can't that. What, what are the perceived benefits of this change?
I think like many things, there were a lot of good intentions at the onset. You know, the intent was to create a, create an assessment that truly measured the Common Core standards in a rigorous way and did it in a, as authentic a way as possible, which is part of why we have the performance-based assessment with 80-minute sessions where students are gonna be writing for 80 minutes. I think those in, good intentions have led to the creation of something that is very large. And I don't think that they have always had the logistics and kinda where the rubber hits the road thinking in mind as they were being designed. So, yes, as you said, I don't think anybody set out to create something that was this large of a burden. I think they set out to create something that would be truly a good assessment using the most current technology and the best of what we know about assessing learning. The problem is to do all of those things takes a lot of time.
John?
I think you highlighted something for me when you said that the speaking and listening is not part of the accountability assessment.
Correct.
And so, basically, that will be used for placement, progress, and intervention. I think that's what you said.
It, it could be. We don't know what it is yet.
Okay.
That's one of those that we don't know. We know that we're required to give it, but the results won't be used to determine whether a building or the district is making AYP.
Okay.
So, other than a participation rate, that will be our only requirement. We don't know the usefulness of the results yet.
When you say accountability assessment, that's one for the system to judge how well the system is doing, as opposed to responding to the needs of a kid. That's the progress, placement, and intervention.
Correct.
Is it just, is it my understanding that by doing PARK, the state has decided we're gonna do one system on a statewide basis that they want us to stop MAP, which we've had local success with and local satisfaction with?
I don't know that I would say that they're, they're, they're saying that they want us to stop MAP. Well-- But that's gonna, that's probably, at least the spring testing, that's gonna be one of the unintended consequences. You know, I think from a state perspective, they are probably looking at statewide, many if not most school districts don't have something like a MAP assessment that they can use the way that we do. And so, what this is gonna do is provide that same kind of information for everyone in the state.
Okay. The broad expansion of the amount of time needed, resources needed, and the only intention is accountability, not serving individual student needs. Seems like a lack of balance. Seems to be a lack of focus from my perspective. I just think this might be just some sort of clarion call to the folks who are very adamant and very passionate that we are over-assessing our kids. And I would hope parents, teachers, everybody gets involved because this looks large. It looks huge. It, granted, it, you know, we're seeing it, there's a lot of open things here, but I just would urge everybody to get involved and please take a role in humanizing what looks very frightening, at least to this board member. I'm being very passionate about this, but I feel strongly that we need to get involved. An example is the ACT. You know, some of us, I think, feel the ACT changes lives. And it took an act of the legislator, legislature, to make sure that that stayed as a focus of, of the thing. So, I just ask for that same activism, responsiveness, whatever it was that got that done. Sorry to give a speech, but that's the way I feel strongly about it.
Karen, and then Chris.
I'm gonna try to start large and then go down. In following up with Margaret and John, you know, once again, the objective is, is it's the Common Core and it's the assessment of having uniform student readiness across the nation, right? And that this is, assesses it. So, was the original intent, remind me, because I'm fuzzy, on, were all the states on board at first? And now it's 17 states with District of Columbia? Kind of, can you level-set? First question.
There are, there are actually two different groups of states. So, Illinois is a part of PARK. There's another group called Smarter Balance that is a whole nother group of states and actually a larger number than in PARK. And yes, you're correct. And I actually don't remember the original number of states that were in PARK, but it was larger than it currently is. There are states that have decided to go different paths. There are states that have decided that they want to continue with Common Core as their standards, but that the PARK assessment may not be the right choice for them, either because of expense or because of the speed at which it's rolling out or the burden that it's placing on their current systems. So, yes, there are states that have pulled back and dropped out of PARK.
And that's the states, legislators?
Correct.
That have pulled out. Okay. So, I, the other question is, you know, along the lines of John's, is the PARK with respect to ACT, and it typically says, by the time that you are 11th grade, here are the common across the nation college and career readiness benchmarks that you would be at. And we've got colleges that accept that standard of assessment to see how well students will do at their universities. So, how do we then look at PARK and work with the higher levels of education without adding additional cost to either the district and/or community, parents for their students being tested, one, through this system, and then two, for that college and career readiness? I mean, you don't, go ahead.
Well, I think what you're getting at is, you know, is PARK a replacement for ACT? Are, are colleges gonna look at PARK and say, okay, you didn't take ACT, but I've got this PARK score and that will tell me, that's just as valid? Is that gonna be just as valid a measure to the colleges? And I don't know that, I, I can't speak for the colleges and what they will accept, but I find it hard to believe that at least in the short term, until there's a history of PARK and colleges have some data that they can look at and say, you know what, this score on PARK really does mean the same thing as this score on ACT. So, I think at least for the next several years, colleges aren't going to be looking at PARK the same way that they're looking at an ACT. They are still going to expect a student to have taken an entrance exam like ACT or SAT, that they know what it means.
Right.
You know, the other issue for colleges is PARK isn't universal across the country. It's a consortium of 17 states. So, are colleges gonna have a, okay, this PARK score works for us and this Smarter Balance score works for us and this ACT? You know, I think at least, again, in the short term, the next several years, they're gonna want an ACT score.
Correct. And so, once again, to John's point, you know, just so that the community and parents understand kind of what's coming, what's coming. I think that this is great timing for us to be educating everyone and bringing out these points so that people do get involved and understand not only what's the benefit and the original intent, which you, you know, there's always great intentions, but are we fulfilling those intentions without creating so many other unintended consequences, is what it appears to be. So, the next piece of the question is, I know that we are not gonna address it now, but it really, as you listen to this presentation, you can, you can slice it many different ways of how it's gonna affect us. One is instructional days for students, you know, you know, two, how much are they getting instruction versus testing throughout the year? I mean, you, you gave a really good sample of just twice in the school year, where how many days does that take away from instruction, as well as what's our technology platform that's gonna have to be upgraded, you know, caused to it, let alone the technology and applications and people just to do the testing. And completely understand that we want to assess whether students, what readiness they're at and to help them grow through the system. Everyone agrees with that. But it, it just has a lot of implications that we're gonna have to work through, which we know that. But I think that more people need to understand it. So, I thank you for presenting this information and allowing us to kinda open up, you know, people's eyes about, you know, this is just one thing that we're gonna have a lot of time and energy and resources that are gonna have to figure it out for the benefit and student outcomes.
Chris?
If I'm adding to the absurdity of this or not, but for PIRA, my understanding is, is that if you just do the year-end testing with PARK, you still have to do MAP for PIRA. It doesn't count.
We still have to do something for the student growth component of--
It has to be an intra-year. So, you have to have two data points within the same year in order to do PIRA.
Yes. And, and part of the issue there is that, well, first of all, PIRA, we've already been told, our, our current accountability assessments, ISAT and PSA can't be used for those.
Right.
So, our assumption is that PARK being our accountability assessment also won't be able to be used as a part of the--
So, there isn't an option to get rid of MAPs then, if that's the only other accountability measure that we have?
We would still have to have something within the school year that we could use--
Because the people that wrote the PARK rules did not talk to the people that wrote the PIRA rules.
Correct.
And none of which had ever educated a kid in their lives, potentially. I mean, are we really going to propose a calendar where the kids have like three week, four weeks of instruction over a three-month period? I mean, what are our options? I mean, this has gotten to the point where it's nuts. And so, I mean, I think the question, you know, that I have is, don't we start with what, what is best for academic growth of our kids and the professional development of our staff? And, and how do we, how do we address this? Because, I mean, we, if you're gonna sit back and be reactive, I mean, I can't imagine that any sane person is going to let a calendar like that drive our district.
Well, one of the things, I'm part of 30 superintendents in the area who have met over this issue. And we have submitted a position paper to the state superintendent and to ISBE about our concerns related to the PARK testing on a number of levels. We're hoping to meet with the state superintendent, or at least representatives of the 30 superintendents that I'm part of, to talk about our concerns about the implementation of PARK on a number of levels. And I think we've touched on most of them. I think that there's a conflict of interest about what is the priority importance in the state. From, I think, students and families, I think they value ACT. I think they value AP testing and AP classes. And I think they also value, on some level, and universities certainly do, looking at final exams, final, final schedules for students. This kinda creates a conflict of what that priority is, because PARK, if you look at the high school calendar up there, it kinda trumps that. It kinda says PARK is what's important. And yet, you know, there's this conflict of interest, especially, I think, for students who are still gonna need an ACT, SAT, college readiness exam if they wanna go into a university or college. And yet, we're abandoning that. It appears that the state is not gonna be funding universal ACT testing in the state. Instead, it'll be PARK. And we already touched on that about what those issues are. The other thing you touched on, Chris, that is my major concern, are we really gonna go down to three weeks of instruction? Because our technical capacity, even a district like Elmhurst, is not gonna allow us not to disrupt classes, and I'll look at the high school again. By the time we rotate all the students through, pull them out of classes, put them back in classes, get them down to the labs to do the testing, you are, it's a major disruption to the educational process, instruction in the classroom. I don't see how it can't be an instructional process. And, and our technical capacity, as Dave will tell you, is limited right now. So, even if we had the purchase of more computers to give to students, where's the tech capacity to do that? And then the whole question of PARK and ACT. You know, which ones are universities gonna be looking on? I do not believe they're gonna be looking at PARK. I think they're, they're, they, for a long time, will be looking at ACT. And, and the other thing to remember is, is, is Margaret asked, is there anybody who's doing this? The answer is no. But everybody will be doing it next year across the state. So, our position paper is really pretty simple. We are asking the state to slow this down, to give us time to analyze, you know, the pros and cons of PARK and what else we could do, to give us more time to analyze it, to give us time to see how we might institute this, maybe on a pilot basis rather than universally coming across, across the state. And then, at least giving us some time to look at the PARK test results, because the other thing, we, we don't know what's happening with the field testing. We won't know until spring. And yet, the schedule is, in a year later, we're gonna be doing a full-blown PARK testing that all kids will be doing. I, I think there's just a reason to pause and take our time. I don't want to badmouth PARK. I think, again, there are best intentions. I think it's a very thorough, different exam that does increase the rigor for students. So, I don't wanna portray it as the devil coming into the system. But I do think there's some real legitimate concerns about what we're doing for kids and instruction that need to be revisited. So, at least from the superintendents, we're putting in a position paper. The state does not have funding yet for this. The, the state has to go to the legislatures and ask for funding. They have done that. And it's to the tune of $93 million for next year to institute the PARK, part. And that'll be going to the legislatures in the spring of this year.
Shannon?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about the funding, how it, it's not secured for, for this system. So, I believe it's time for the board to mobilize and make our voices heard on this issue. It's just unworkable. I don't, I don't even know how it would work in any avenue. And then, we don't have enough technol-- And then, we don't have enough technology for the testing, let alone any technology for the child that's not even taking the test. There's no technology available for the daily instructional time. So I think we should start talking, you know, with PEG Agnos, work with LEND, and, and make our voices heard.
John?
By the way, PEG Agnos was at our meeting with the superintendent, so PEG is aware, and we were working with her.
John?
Dave, what's the deadline, other than they're not going to give the ISET anymore? What's the, the deadline that's driving this? I mean, it wasn't the race-to-the-top dollars, because Illinois didn't get them. What, what deadlines are driving this?
I believe, I don't know the, you know, I don't know all the inside details, but I believe they have had a commitment on this timeline for quite a while, when the consortium put together Park. And I think they are following the timeline that they had developed as the consortium. And Illinois is one of the lead states in the consortium. So they are one of the drivers of this. And for good or bad, they are on a schedule to do full testing, minus the formative assessment at the beginning of the year, next spring for all. Now, originally, it was supposed to be all online. They have now changed that and said it's paper and pencil for one year at your option. We're not sure if there's additional costs to do that as, as a district, if you choose to do that. That's still up in the air. But I think there is this, for what, for good or bad, and I don't know what the urgency is, but there seems to be, we're going to do it this spring. And again, the superintendents are just asking us to slow down, to get everybody at a table, industry leaders, educators, everybody else, and just take a look at it and pause it and say, is this really the direction we want to go in, and what are the unintended consequences? Now that we see the schedule, now that we see what's entailed, what are the unintended consequences, so that everybody's aware of it? And if the decision's still made, we're going to go ahead, then, you know, obviously, we're going to go ahead. But I would hope there's some thoughtful discussion and exchange of ideas of how, how this might play out for high schools and districts overall.
Chris?
Can I just, I don't want to take this the wrong way, but if the decision is made to go ahead, what happens if we don't go ahead? I mean, what happens if we decide that what's in the best interest of our children is to phase this in at a different rate? Now, I'm not, I'm with you, Dave. I'm not against the accountability and a rigorous, you know, a more rigorous test, but one of them, you know, and something that fits in with a real academic schedule. And if we decided to design it that way, what happens if we do our own thing? What could, what does the state do?
You know, I, I'm not sure. I wouldn't want to try to guess. I think, I think the usual things could happen. They could withhold state aid and say, you're not in compliance with the audit.
They don't give us any?
Well, they give us some. I mean, they could, they could lock up the superintendent until--
And the, and the board president?
Probably.
It's my understanding that Park prisons are being built currently. Right, for a cost that well exceeds $92 million, exactly. Can I, can I ask a couple of questions, and I'll, I'll do my very best not to be redundant, but my, my first question was going to be, does this seem as silly to you as it does to me? But I'm not going to ask that, because I think I know the answer. The, on this calendar, the blue is, are all Park testing days, is that?
Correct.
Do I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Now, can you just take me through the life of one kid in March, April, and May? That one kid's not going to be testing, tested on every blue day, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, which goes to kind of what we were talking about earlier, looking at, okay, how many minutes is each kid going to do? So one kid is not going to be tested every one of those days. They are going to be tested probably five different days during the first blue chunk, and four different days during the second one. You know, the other piece of that, even on the days that they're not being tested, because of the length of the session, so, you know, we talked about a couple of the, the English language arts sessions are 80 minutes with a kind of a 40-minute buffer being built in. So that's 120 minutes that has to be scheduled in for those students that are testing. That's going to impact the schedule for everyone else during that day. You know, the high school is going to have to design special schedules for these days. So even though students may not be in a test on a particular day, there probably still is an impact for those students, because it's going to impact the school schedule. It's not going to be a normal instructional day. You know, half the kids in their math class may not be in their math class, because they're still finishing up a test. And so, the teacher is not going to be able to run that class the way they normally would plan for and run that class.
And that, that makes sense. Can you, I'm not asking you to do this right now off the top of your head, but we schedule 178 days a year of instruction. And we give MAP tests, and that cuts it down to something, whatever that number is. I mean, if, if sometime in your spare time, if you could calculate what, how many instruction days MAP beats into, and then, how many instruction days Park would eat into, so that we have what our new numbers of days of instructions looks like with, with Park implemented? And I also heard correctly, right, that, that right now, we have a history of MAP, use them for interventions, we understand what MAP scores mean, and that to correlate MAP to Park, we'd have to run them both consecutively for how many years, do you think, for it to be useful?
Well, the more years, the, the more secure you can be in the data. I would think you would probably want to do a minimum of two years.
Okay.
You know, three would be more ideal, but you would probably want two years' worth of data where you could match kids. That would give you a big enough sample size that, that you could make some, some realistic conclusions.
Okay. Yeah, at some future update, I'd also be curious to know what the school, the number of instructional days in a school year looks like, if you're running both of these tests. And then I have a question for the board. This is an election year. Primaries are in March, general elections in November. Should we invite some of our friends that are running for the state legislature in to talk to this group and have them talk to the board, our teachers, our staff, our parents? And maybe run them through this example? Because I have a feeling that they may not fully appreciate what they've created. And ask them if it seems as absurd to them as it does to us. And maybe that brings it home for them that it's time that they do something about it. Is that something we should pursue, or should we reach out individually? How do you think we should proceed here?
The reason we have a separate Board of Education is to stay independent of political things. But I think by all means, our overlapping constituency should try to make these the important issues of the election for those people, so they can get some broad strokes. I'd love to see this in front of every candidate and people to ask it. Ask them, what do they think of it? I'm just not sure it's the Board of Education that should be doing it. That's my personal belief.
Okay. Any other opinions on that?
And my thought is, the way this is laid out right now, it, it looks absolutely inconceivable. Okay? And I also like to think that there's two sides to every story, because what is always being said, that these things were field-tested, and, and teachers were involved in here, and staff. So there's all of this conversation on another side that's being go, being talked about. So I'd like to hear their perception of how this is going to work. And we have our perception, and the numbers appear to be pretty hard and fast. And maybe that type of conversation could get people more in alignment on where we need to go. Because I think right now, the challenge is that there are camps. There, there are different camps, and there's no discussion, and there's no movement. I don't know if this is a conceptually good ideal or not, but I do know that the, the implementation process seems to be incredibly flawed. Okay? And if we want to avoid just, you know, these different camps, if we want real discussion and want people to understand how this works, I think you have to have a discussion. I mean, I, I think you have to. Otherwise, the group that thinks this is great will continue pushing it forward, and then the groups that think this is absurd will sit back and say how crazy this is. And, and those two are not speaking right now. Those two camps are not speaking. And I think that's the challenge, if we don't have a discussion.
So what, what do you think our role is in the facilitation of that discussion?
Well, I, I like the idea that, let's have someone who thinks this is a great idea come in and, and help us understand how this works from implementation process. Help us to understand how this will work for our students, how that, that timeframe that's up there right now will not be totally disruptive. Help us to understand all those key questions. Help us to understand what's going to happen with the ACT, how that college placement is going to work. Because I do understand that the ACT is college placement, and there's many different things that are factored in there. But the ACT is a big piece, a big piece, particularly for some of the larger schools that don't have time to individual, into individualized assessments. So I think we need to have some kind of discussion.
So do you think that person is a person in the Illinois Legislature, or associated somehow with the Illinois Board of Education, or?
I'd say, let's see who we can, I mean, who's, who gets to make the decision? I think that would be the, who's making the decision?
Clearly, the Legislature's going to fund it.
But they didn't write it.
They didn't write it, but they're going to fund it.
Right. And so I guess I'm saying that, maybe my thought is, I'm going, I'm speaking my perspective, is those that are funding it, that are making the decision, need to be able to speak about why this is a good decision. And, and hear from us on why we don't think it is. That's my perspective.
I'm just looking for the opinion of the Board of, you know, how we should move forward. I mean, I, I'd like to be proactive about this. If this is being foist upon us, and we don't agree, then we should be proactive about it, in, in my opinion. And, but, you know, but I'm, I'm one of seven people here, so. Karen?
I have several thoughts. One, Dave, you said there's 30 superintendents that are in the state of Illinois, that are working together to put some reality around it, to Margaret's point. They have Boards, Board of Educations. Maybe what we do is, we tap into what are their boards doing? The second idea that I have is, I can go out to PEG, now that I know that she was part of the, that same meeting, and raise the issue for LEND, PEG Agnos, the executive director, and ask her, if she's formulating, or other board members, part of LEND, asking the same questions, doing things, and we can get ideas and, and collaborate. And so it's just not one board out there. I think the way that the superintendents handle it is the best way, which is you all collaborate together, you know, put some reality and the, and the true concerns and data behind it, and then you present it to make a difference. That's my perspective.
Do you think LEND would get several school boards together to actually meet with legislators?
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what PEG does. She's, she works with legislators in Springfield on, on our behalf. That's her position.
And where does she stand on this?
With the superintendents, if she was at that meeting.
Okay, so what's she doing about it?
I'm not sure.
She was, she was trying to facilitate a meeting with the state superintendent and our representatives from the 30 superintendents who have come together on this issue. And so, they're in Springfield, I think, next week. Now, I have not heard whether a meeting has been set up or not, but PEG was trying to facilitate that meeting with the state superintendent to share our concerns. And again, I want to emphasize, you know, we're not, we're not taking a position that this is all bad, and, you know, it needs to be thrown out. We are just, our first recommendation is to slow down the implementation, give us all enough time to revisit this, so that there is a good, solid implementation, if we're going to move forward, that addresses some of our concerns that we see on the surface. So, you know, I don't want this, you know, us versus them, that's not our intention. Our intention is just to have a, a good dialogue. But this, to us, has huge implications about what happens at Illinois school districts across the state, how we operate, how we do assessment in the long term. And I think it's worth more time than we have presently have. And again, nobody's fault, but we just got this sample calendar just two weeks ago. So that's what kind of was the impetus for us to say, whoa, we need to really sit down, come together, and we had some common calls back and forth, and that's how the meeting got set up with the superintendents. And so it's early in the stage. And, and I, I have not heard, they may be, the state may be fine in meeting with us and talking about our concerns, I just haven't heard what the results are yet. But PEG Agnos is, is part of that, so to speak.
Jim?
I mean, so Jim, I mean, I haven't specifically talked to PEG about Park and what, you know, to answer your question, but what I, what I offered is, I can now, with, specifically, so that we're in alignment with our superintendent and the 30 others, that we just want to engage in dialogue to help us better understand how we can make this happen in this timeframe, and not lose sight of really instruct, instructing our students.
So how about if we do this? How about if we direct you, as a board, to talk to PEG Agnos? Ask her how we can help. Ask her if she is developing a plan to engage other Illinois school boards in this discussion, because I have to believe several share our concerns. And what her plan is to mobilize school boards and school districts that she represents to get this message to not only the legislate, legislature, but whoever came up with this plan.
Jim?
I'd like to add the following. I agree with your, with your suggestion, engaging people who are engaged in election right now, in broad strokes and broad principles. And what I'd suggest is that we kind of look towards using board resolution, stating specifically what our position is on, on this. And it, I, the position I like is what Dave's and Margaret have talked about, is slow down, take a look at the impacts, but do this in concert with the other school boards, so that we're acting, you know, as a group in that respect. And, and make this important. I think the vehicle, the vehicle of responsiveness is probably conditions on the appropriation that makes all this happen. And that hopefully is, in the spring legislative session, that people can have that discussion, the sort of thing that got paired together, you know, the sort of, you know, all groups at the table approach, to take a look at this and slow some of the things down.
I, I agree. I'd certainly like to do this in concert with the superintendents in the state, along with all the school boards that they work for as well. So maybe we can take our direction from that group of superintendents, along with LEND, and figure out how we can collectively make our voices heard in Springfield. Because this is not something that we should just let run without voicing our opinion and making sure that it's heard. Thanks, Charles.
Just one other comment, it goes back to Emily. The one, the one I do want to point out, so you're not surprised. With the implementation of Park right now, in the spring of this coming year, and doing ACT, which is still going to happen this year, the juniors will be tested 21, 22 hours this year, because they will be taking Park and ACT and work keys. Those are all going to happen. And so for juniors, there's a lot of testing on the horizon in, in next spring.
This coming spring, or a year from?
A year from.
A year from?
A year from.
Yeah, I mean, I--
Because Park will be instituted, along with, the state is still funding ACT. So all that, you know, still, both of those will happen next year.
It seems to me to be a successful high school student, especially nowadays, you have to learn to use your time well. I, I look at that calendar, and I think, let's see, what are my priorities? ACT? My ACT that counts, my AP exams, and then all that other stuff that-- stuff that you adults are judging yourself on, because I really don't care.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
So Dave or Charles, when we talk about this testing, it's just the English Language Arts and Math so far, right? It's not the other subjects that they're going to add on to assess Common Core.
Right.
So we need to be very clear on this, so that people think this is all the testing. That's not it. This is the first step, right? I mean, because otherwise, people will think this is it.
You're correct that it's only English Language Arts and Math, which that Common Core is currently English Language Arts and Math. There are now the next-gen science standards, which, so this isn't, doesn't include that, doesn't assess that. So if that clarifies. But yeah, Common Core is only English Arts and Math, and Park only assesses English Arts and Math, English Language.
Who date, and there's other subjects to be added later.
We don't know that. Yeah, we don't, I mean, we do have the new next-gen science standards. We don't know the status of when those might become a part of testing, or if there will be. Same thing with other subjects. Other subjects are at various stages of creating new national standards. So that would be farther down the line.
Okay. Let's move on.
With that, our next item for discussion on superintendent communication is a request that I'm responding to from the Board of Education at the last board meeting, to give you a kind of broad preview of what discretionary funding items for personnel might be considered when and if discretionary funding was available. I've got a couple caveats with this, so I just want to go through those before we go through the discretionary list. First of all, I think I said at the time that I would try to get, put together a broad list of just ideas of where discretionary funding could go. I did not have the time to put a lot of detail into this. So that's number one. Number two, it hasn't been, none of these items have been vetted in any detail. They've been discussed by the administrative team in broad terms, but we have not at all gotten into the detail of how this, how these items might work, what's the cost analysis, how might they be implemented. That's not what I could do in the two-week period that the board wanted this report back. Also, these items have not been vetted with the rest of the staff. I haven't gotten back to teachers. I haven't had time to talk with staff overall about what these priorities might be. So these are just a list of things that we have talked about over the last two years that I've been in the district, the last three, about staffing options that we may want to look at in the future. So that's kind of the caveat to the board. And if the board was expecting more, I apologize, but that's what I was able to pull together in two weeks, and at least get to the administrative team and brainstorm some of these items. So with that, let me go through these in a little more detail, so you have an understanding of what these are. I think the first one the board has talked about, which is some form of administrative interns or TOSSAs, that would be an assist to some of the schools in the district with the overwhelming load of teacher evaluation that some of our principals are feeling as a result of para. Mostly, the big pressure that we see right now on principals are in our large elementary schools that have a lot of staff, a lot of certified staff, that they're trying to evaluate. The para evaluation takes a number of hours. Those principals are struggling to provide educational leadership, and at the same time, have a robust evaluation system for their teachers that is meaningful and worthwhile. They're spending five or six hours per evaluation sometimes on teacher evaluations. So there is a real struggle to, you know, the responsibility of managing the building, providing educational leadership. So the idea of an intern or TOSA would do two things. It would relieve some of the pressure on the principals to have another person that could be of assistance with them on a variety of issues, data gathering, leading, help lead the staffs on school improvement plans, looking at assistance for teachers within the building, on individual students' learning outcomes. The other thing it would do, it would allow teachers to have the opportunity of those teachers that are interested, or might be interested in administration, to start to have the opportunity to experience an administrative position for a period of time. And so it would also allow us to have a feeder system within Elmhurst School, because now you have a cadre of individuals who would have had administrative experience. The intent would probably be to rotate them back to the classroom after a period of time. But again, they have an idea of what it's like to be an administrator. We have an idea of how they might operate as an administrator, and have a pool that we could rely on that's internal. And so we think that's a benefit for all people, all of our staffs coming forward. And it provides teachers the opportunity to be teacher leaders, which I think is always a valuable experience for teachers. Instructional tech support, I don't think I need to talk a whole lot on the details of this. This is obviously a big need. We've talked about this. David has talked about this a number of times. We are simply tapped out on the tech side with the amount of staff that David has, and the amount of devices that have been introduced to this system. David has not added staff since he has been here. So simply on the tech side, he's understaffed. The other thing that we have not done is had robust instructional technical support for the teachers in the district. We have one person devoted to instructional tech support in this system. That is not enough with the infusion of all the technology that we see coming. And we just talked about Park, and some of the implications of having more devices, and how that tech support will work, much less the instructional side. How do teachers, and who helps them with infusing technology in their classrooms? Who gives them ideas of what might work, what not work, who could partner with them, when they have an idea to pilot a tech program in their classroom? Who supports them? Right now, there is one person who does all that. Professional development coordinator, this is one, as we move forward, professional development on a number of fronts for our certified staff and support staff is becoming a huge issue. With all of the changes that are going on in education, we are struggling just to keep people up to speed, and give them the training they need to implement a variety of programs that are coming either from the state, or the federal government, or initiatives that we want. And we just don't have somebody, or a group of people, that can support and integrate and develop professional development for certified staff, for support staff, all of those things. So it's a need that we see, that kind of coordination, somebody who could really do the long-range planning. We would also like to see more professional development opportunities for our staff. That's kind of our R and D. And so we need more time, and I think we just need some support on who coordinates all of that for the district overall. The next one is 504 coordinator. We have seen an increase in 504 referrals, especially at York High School, from students who are coming in with some kind of identified disability. And when they come in with that identified disability, we have an obligation under 504 to accommodate these students. Those numbers are increasing, and staff is struggling all over the district, but especially at the high school, on managing those plans, because they're individual plans written for each individual student, and those have to be implemented, and that communication has to happen for all staff. There's a number of timelines that are associated with 504. There's a number of assessments that are associated with 504. And there's just, there is nobody in the district right now who could coordinate all those efforts. Community partnership coordinator, there has been a lot of discussion, I know at the board table and in the community, about forming partnerships with corporations, businesses. We just don't have the capacity right now to do that. And so, somebody who is devoted, either full-time or part-time, to developing those kind of partnerships, and having a closer relationship with the business community, with outside entities, would be of value to the district. Math interventionists. We have reading interventionists in the district right now, at the elementary and middle school. We don't have math interventionists. This would be evening out that we still have students who have needs in math, having somebody who would specialize in that. Or the other option is combining the math and reading specialists into learning coordinators at each school, and having them working with staff and working with students at the same time to coordinate interventions for students. So there's a couple of options that we could look at with that. Curriculum department restructuring. We have done some very preliminary work on curriculum department restructuring. But part of the obstacle we have is the cost of the curriculum department restructuring, because I think what we would like to do is get more staff involvement, teacher involvement, into the curriculum development, that more teachers would have some curriculum responsibility to assist the curriculum department in evaluating and implementing curriculum across all grade levels. But that would be a cost, because we would either have to release teachers, either part-time or full-time, to do that. It's a costly measure. We costed out, and it's a costly proposal, just in theory. So again, broad concepts. We haven't gone into detail, but it's something that, you know, if we had the funding, we may want to look at more closely, just to have teachers who are looking at curriculum a lot more closely, and having teachers have that responsibility, at least at a part-time basis. The district used to do this a number of years ago with TOSSAs. We had teachers on special assignment who would assist the curriculum department. It would kind of be rolling back to that kind of model across the district. Class size reduction at the middle school and high school. I think at the elementary schools, that we have some grade levels across the district that are hitting up at our targets. But overall, the elementary class sizes are really pretty reasonable right now. That's probably not as true in the middle school and high school. We have inched up middle school and high school class sizes with our targets, and I know the board members have heard from staff and parents about those two specific areas. So, you know, do you look at at least resetting targets on middle school and high school? Expensive proposition, but we wanted to put it up there for conversation. We have, the board has had, and the community has really required us, to really take a good look at registration of new students, and ongoing registration issues across the district. And we have instituted that this year. However, it has been an extremely time-consuming process, both for building secretaries and central office secretaries, and it is just a time-consuming process. One of the things we could consider is establishing a centralized enrollment office, where the enrollment office would take the responsibility of all registrations and enrollments for new students. You get a lot of consistency that way, somebody who becomes an expert in all of the variety of paperwork that we get presented with on residency proofs. There is a standard that that department could develop, that could be announced, and the consistency, and doing the investigation when we suspect that we have individuals who are not residing in the district. So that, another option. Summer school, a lot of times, students are in need of support, counseling, and guidance. We seem to be lacking that right now, and so that would be another option that we would look at. One other that's not on the list that came to be later, but I think it's worth looking at, would be the psychologists that we have on staff. They are doing double duty right now, and be the kind of our data center people, who do the data crunching at the building level for us, and doing the usual duties that you would associate with a psychologist. Here, they do double duty, and we split them between buildings oftentimes. It's a big load for psychologists, and we have lost some psychologists who are going to other districts, because they can be full-time at one building. Where in our district, we're splitting them. So something else to consider as we move down the list. So again, broad perspective on a lot of options. Again, I have not gone back to staff and talked about these. And I guess the challenge for us is, you know, a priority, I'm not sure you can prioritize until you know what the funding status is, and what's possible and not, and then going back and doing that. But I wanted, at the board's request, this is kind of a broad stroke on what those staffing needs are.
Dave, thank you for bringing us in at the beginning of this. And the catch-22 that we always make you work under is that if you're bringing us in at the beginning, we want to see the finished product. But if you brought us in at the end, when you got the finished product, we would have said, where have you been through the process? So this is a better place to start, at the beginning. Please keep us updated as you put numbers on it, as you put costs on it, as you prioritize it within your administration. But from Dave's explanations, are there any questions that we have about just this broad brush, throwing ideas out there, at ideas that Dave's staff has at improving education here?
My question is more around the process, not getting into any of the detail of employee engagement, community engagement, you know, getting a lot of input to help with the decision.
As I said, Karen, I would like to take this list and have the opportunity to vet it with staff, add their ideas, because again, this is just from the administration. Although it is based on conversations administration has had with teaching staff and support staff, but we'd like to formally vet that. We'd also like to run it by, you know, PTA groups, or PTA council, get the parents' input on some of these. I've heard, you know, I know I've already talked to some parents. I had superintendent community coffee last night, and another, a number of these issues came up there, about the community's desires. So I think you start having those conversations at the same time, giving us time to work on more detail on what it might look like, and then circling back around. But certainly, the first stage would be, is this an all-comprehensive list, or are there other things that, you know, staff members may want us to look at, or community members may want us to look at? Develop that list, and then start doing more detail work on it.
A couple, I mean, one, I would be interested, as you get down the road here, given the discussion we just had, and you pointed that out with the instructional tech support and whatnot. Some of these things are nicer to have than others. I mean, I would start pushing some of these into the requirements section, if you're not going to burn out your administrative staff. So the urgency of some of this, given what the, I mean, I would put these under mandates, in my mind. I view these as, these are things that the legislature or the governing bodies have put on our plate, that because there's not a direct cost, you know, we don't have to hire somebody within the law, that we've just dumped on our people. And I think that they're every bit as much of a mandate as, you know, ELL and special ed and things like that, that we put in the non-discretionary section. So, I mean, I just think as we go through this, I think we need to have that conversation. And then, some of these are individual positions, or I'm curious about is, how much would you have to spend to have an impact? As we, again, I'm not asking you for the answers, but, you know, if you're a 504 coordinator, you're going to hire one person. Class size reduction, a lot more. And I'm just, I'm concerned with, I guess this kind of gets back to, I guess, we probably need to give you guys some guidance on a range of what we are thinking about spending. Because if you go out to the community and go, hey, you know, how about this? Yeah, I want that. Oh, by the way, it costs $2 million. Whoops. And then you get everybody all excited about something that you said, oh, we never really meant that, because we couldn't fund it. And so, I mean, I don't know what the process is, and maybe we should have this discussion about, kind of, what is the range? I mean, knowing our budget, in my mind, it's, I don't know, three to five headcount at this stage. I mean, and if we have a discussion about a longer-range plan, and maybe things to get facing, but, and maybe I shouldn't have said that here just off the cuff, but we need to get to, I think, a range that says if it's outside of this bound, we shouldn't be teasing people with this kind of an option.
Well, here would be my suggestion. Let's let Dave and his staff bring this back to us after they've thought about each of these, and after they've put some kind of a headcount number on each, and some kind of a dollar figure on each. And, you know, after they've thought about the impact, and how they would prioritize it, in their opinion, of how it would impact education in our district. So, yeah, I think those are all valid thoughts, but, you know, I think this is a multi-step process. And this is just, we're getting let in on the ground floor here. So, you know, let's just see how this goes as it comes back to us in the next several meetings. I mean, the timeframe here is, what, Dave? April-ish before we're March?
I would say April. I would say April because what I would like to do, like, I'm thinking just to vet this with staff, I would like to go to the district leadership team, give them this list, ask them to go back to their staff, ask good questions about what else, how do they feel about this? Have a second discussion and then bring that input in and then start developing the list in more detail. So, yeah, I would say April, May probably is to have more detail in what, in headcount and what the costs are would be. This will be a significant undertaking to go through that on each of these items, so.
And I think the other hidden benefit is here that, all right, so then we figure out what we can afford right now, but we also then have things we can discuss with the community. So I've said enough. Let me go to John and, go ahead.
Thanks for the great list, Dave. Just the way you've come up with it, I think, is great. And just, next year is important on this, but these are discretionary and it should be geared towards strategic. And so it's the long term. How are these things going to produce long-term change? And so, yes, we're in a hurry to get next year's budget in shape, but, you know, it's over the next few years is how it will make an impact, I believe.
Margaret, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thanks for reminding me on the context of what this is, the broad-based list. I appreciate that. Because you're right, sometimes it's easy to get ahead of your skis. Note the Olympics. All right. So sometimes it's easy.
Very good, Margaret. Yeah, that was beautifully done.
Thank you, thank you. And I really like the idea of, this is the first list, and I know you've said it a couple of times now, about going back and taking it to the staff, taking it to the DLT and getting, you know, because there might be things on here that were not even thought of, and there might be, certainly might be different ways to do it. So we're thinking headcounts, there might be another way to do these things. So I like the process that you outlined.
Shannon?
Two things. One is for funding, when you're talking about how much, these positions are going to be year after year. So we would have to set aside funds, which for investment, I'll call it investment funds because this isn't one time. So we'd have to dedicate our budget process to investment each year. And the other thing too is, we did this last January, we had a discretionary list of considerations and three of the items that we were talking about tonight were on that list from last year. So I'm wondering, why not start with that, going back to that discretionary staffing considerations from last year? Maybe, I don't, would that be easier because there were three items on that? It was the school psychologists, the instructional tech support, and the administrative interns/TOSSAs. So, I don't know, that was a question I had for Dave.
Well, again, I think the board wanted a broader list, is what I heard at the last meeting. So I developed a broader list. And at this point, I think at the very least, we should go back even with those three and get more staff input about where those are. Are those a priority? You know, and I don't even want to talk priority yet, but, you know, are there other things that we missed? I just think if you want to get staff input, you have to take the time, and this is like a starting list, but then let's vet the whole list and then we can go back. And then the next, eventually down the road, we're going to have to prioritize this because we, you know, certainly we all know, we're not going to afford the list or even half the list. So, you know, how do we prioritize the needs? And I think Chris was talking about that. How much funding do we have? Because the amount of funding eventually, I think we have to have that discussion because that will force some of the choices. You know, I can use, if it's six FTEs, just to give an example. Do we make a decision to do all six FTEs on administrative interns at TOSSAs? Or do we start spreading that out and saying, well, maybe we're only going to do two TOSSAs, but we're going to do some tech support and we're going to do something else? I mean, that's going to affect the priority and how those things are described. So eventually, I think we are going to have to, further down the road, what that funding's going to look like? What is the amount? Because it is going to affect the decision-making.
Chris?
So, I mean, we had asked you a couple of years ago, on a longer-range vision project, talking about looking at what the district would look like into the 21st century and what. And what I, my concern was just that some of this is in a discussion about that and forcing, and trying to pull that into here. I just want to make sure that we're not asking you to do the same thing twice. So first, it's just that, how it dovetails with this and, I mean, I think the point here is something that we can make some investment in sooner rather than later. It won't be all-encompassing and it's not transformational necessarily because of the dollars that are going to be involved with it. But making sure that we don't create the list you're already creating on this five-year plan. Second, I mean, again, I mean, let's be realistic. We saw a budget that was about balanced. And we're looking at saying, okay, well, we believe that that's a conservative budget. So at most, you're going to have a variance of 1%, 2%, which is a million or $2 million? Maybe not. So let's say you're not comfortable betting the farm on that. So realistically, you've got some number probably below, I mean, what's the board comfortable running a deficit on? It's below a million bucks. So when we start talking about this stuff, the stuff over that probably goes into the long-term plan that you're going to have to have a different kind of funding mechanism to get to. And so talking about things that, so I'm just trying to separate long-term from right now, and even though there's some things right now that would be really neat to have and we can talk about a process, you're just not going to have, if you spend that half a million bucks this year, you're going to have to spend it next year and the year after and the year after. And our budget, as you know, has been kind of bounced to down. So we're not coming up with any extra money after that, once we layer this into our five-year plan. And so even if it's, okay, we want to get to here and there's a phased deployment, we're going to hire three this year, but then you need to hire two next year and four the following year. You know, we need to look at that five-year plan and say, hey, you know, we don't have the funding for that to go down that path. That's a different discussion longer term. So my point is just, I think we can sooner rather than later try, I just don't like going to staff and asking them to dream without any kind of a box because you're going to disappoint. And so, and helping kind of keep everybody on the reservation and from getting, you know, kind of start, and people thinking that we're blowing up the budget. The reality of our budget is that we don't have a lot of money to spend on this, but I think we have some that we wanted to talk about, given, again, the mandates that I think have been put on top of us. So I don't know, maybe that's a discussion the finance committee can have and start. And we probably need to throw up that budget slide again and talk collectively around how much we're willing to invest before we lead anybody on too far in what it is. Is it two people? Is it three? Is it six? You know, because I think that's where we're at.
I mean, that kind of comes at it from both directions and why don't we start working through the PMA model in the finance committee and figure out what those tolerances look like?
I just want to manage expectations. When we lay this out to staff and ask for their input, that the expectations are managed, that this isn't some, you know, big bucket that we have available for this. So, you know, they don't, oh, great, the board's decided to stop managing the budget or something like that. I mean, I said that wrong, but, but the point is, is just so they understand the realistic expectations around what we can afford. And so I think we can start that process and kind of see where it goes, but I think we need to do that.
Shannon?
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying. I think we need to talk about the immediate needs, which to me is building-based support. We need help in our buildings, whether, you know, it's the psychologist, the curricular technology support, the interventionist or instructional technology support. We can't keep piling on to the teachers without giving them building-based support. So that would be, you know, to me, that's non-discretionary, especially with the testing coming down the pike.
Margaret?
I have, and I absolutely agree, we need to manage expectations. And I think we also have to do, I mean, just like Dave had to manage our, the board's expectations, okay, this is a list. We are not, we are not committing to anything. There's not a lot of numbers behind it. This is just a list that we want to get you involved in, in the beginning. And I actually like the idea of having the staff involved in at the beginning and somehow reminding, I know it's going to be a lot of extra work, but reminding them that, you know, the sky's not the limit. You know, there are some really reasonable things that we have to talk about. But I think the benefit of getting people involved in the beginning is that you have the opportunity to build more support so it doesn't look like there's a surprise when a decision is made one way or the other.
Karen?
The only comment that I'll make is, what I see is a short-term and long-term. There's a lot of pain points that we have heard for three years, six years, that we've been on the board, that Dave's been here, that we hear from our surveys. And so we're looking at short-term, what are the issues? And long-term, how do we, how do we keep getting to that lighthouse district? And how do we manage those two with the budget that we have and the economics that we have? And so it's not just what's your dream list, I think is what you're talking about, Chris, which I completely agree, is how do we solve the issues that we have? And then how do we start to engage in where we want to be and how do we step through it? That's how I envision the conversations to set expectations.
Okay.
Let me just point out too, I should mention this. I want the board to remember, I have a futures committee right now that is made up of faculty across the district that we're meeting on a regular basis, or at least we're trying to. We've had some snow freeze days that have curtailed our meetings. It's gone off to a slow start. But there are some longer-range strategic issues that are not on this list. And I will go back, part of this is sharing this with the futures committee is one. But number two, looking a little longer term, that really, to me, this is a list of more short-term immediate needs they may want to look at, but then there's some really long-range ones. And I'll just mention one. Full-day kindergarten, I think is one that at least the community is going to want to discuss in the longer term. Do we offer a long-term kindergarten, a full-day kindergarten? What are the implications not only then for staffing, but for capital projects and all of that? There's a number of those that you may want, that may come forward, that is not in front of the board right now, but are much more longer-range that you're not capable of doing now. But again, in the future, is that something that we want to start looking at? And that's just one example. There's going to be others, but.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. And I have to say, as one longstanding board member once said, or one former longstanding board member once said, this is, consent agenda is a way to get a lot done in a little bit of time. But we only have two items on our consent agenda this evening and both probably merit a short discussion. So if someone's interested in removing one of those and maybe we just take them one at a time, would someone want to make a motion to that effect?
I'd like to remove both items from the consent agenda.
There we go. So how about a motion to consider one at a time? We do.
I move that we approve or accept the personnel summary.
Okay, because there's only, well, there's
What do we do?
One item on the personnel's report. Well, there's one item involving two people. Okay? So maybe I should turn this over to Mr. Purno for an, first of all, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Move by John, seconded by Shannon now.
Could I just get a clarification? Are we approving or accepting the personnel report? Approving.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
I think you're going to want to, I can make an announcement on the personnel report, which I think is where we're going, without pulling it off consent and without a motion.
There we go.
So we can do that. And then you can, you can move right now, though, to, I think you're going to want to pull off the RFP for the demographers, so pull that one. Yeah, but I can take care of the personnel.
I mean, it's probably quicker. We have a motion on the floor to accept the personnel report. It's been seconded. Mr. Purno, why don't I have you start the discussion?
Why not? We have two individuals in the audience that have stayed with us till 20 to 10 tonight. We appreciate it, along with some supporters, I see. But on the personnel report tonight, we have two appointments that I'm proud to recommend to the Board of Education. First of all, we have the, my recommendation for the principal, who is Melissa Couch for Bryan Principal, and with her, her colleague, and a recommendation for assistant principal, Tom Heron. So if they would both stand up and just, although I've announced this to the board, I think for the public, these two individuals, Melissa and Tom, were unanimously requested by the Bryan staff. And I met with the Bryan staff twice. And the intention was to, as I said at the beginning of the year, to do a search during this interim period for next year. And the staff really was unanimous in their recommendation that Melissa and then her in turn appointing Tom as the administrative team at Bryan. And that's pretty high praise from her staff who really, in really four short months, really felt that these were the two people who were going to lead Bryan. So proud to recommend them this evening to the Board of Education.
Any discussion? Yeah, I just have one short thing to say, that, you know, we're looking for the best talent we can find. And I believe we found it, and I am thrilled to say that we found it right here in District 205. Melissa Couch has worked in two of our three middle schools. And Tom Herion has the middle school hat-trick. He's worked in all three of our middle schools. And I couldn't think of two better people that are experts in middle school education, particularly in District 205, than Melissa and Tom. And thank you. We're proud of you and congratulations.
Just a side note, I can't resist this, is when I got into education, and I'm not going to say how long ago, it was predominantly a male-dominated, principals were males. This makes our vast principal team female-dominated by far. So I just thought I'd throw that out there. And I think it's a real difference in what has happened in education over a relatively short period of time.
Mrs. Walsh, do we need a roll call on this? No? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous decision to approve the personnel report? All right. Please.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the administration to contract with Cropper GIS Consulting to perform a demographic study and utilization planning. The cost of the demographic study is $15,000. The school utilization planning ranges from $9,300 to $25,800, depending upon the number and type of meetings required to complete the study.
Move by Karen, seconded by?
Second.
John, thank you. All right. Any discussion? Explanation?
I just wanted to comment on a process or procedure standpoint, just to bring everybody up to date on where this was. We had started out, given the size of the spend, and relatively small compared to $110 million budget, we as Chris and the administration lead the project in the process to make this decision. Chris was nice enough to keep us in the loop at all times. I think he had given us progress updates in the finance committee. We did not talk to any of the, any of the folks that replied. That said, Chris, and the decision had not come through the finance committee, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands it. However, Chris did invite the finance committee into the interviews with the finalists. Due to Open Meetings Act issues, we could not attend. We could only have one of us attend. I ended up attending. I just want to make sure that I said in, that everybody knows that I said in on the calls. That said, the decision was ultimately Chris and his teams and that I support the decision. But I just wanted to let everybody know that I did sit in on the calls. I just want to make sure that I said in, that everybody knows that I said it on the calls, that said the decision was ultimately Chris and his teams, and, and that I, I support the decision, but I just wanted to let everybody know that I did sit in on the calls, just to update you on, on the process.
And if I can add, this, this begins our, our process of figuring out what our future population or district looks like, what our facility needs look like, what our staffing needs look like, you know, hopefully far into the future, so we can make some decisions on what boundary lines look like, what our future, what our future requirements will be. So, with that, we're spending money, Mrs. Walsh.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, that's seven ayes, no nays, that passes as well. Upcoming meetings, all which occur in these rooms that we are presently in. Tuesday, February 18th, the Finance and Operations Committee at 6:30 PM. Tuesday, February 25th, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Monday, March 3rd, Board Improvement Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, March 5th, Curriculum and Instruction meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, March 11th, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Tuesday, March 18th, the Finance and Operations Committee meets again at 6:30 PM. And Tuesday, March 25th, the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Are there any board communications? Hearing none, we are at the end of our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.